Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Welcome to another fabulous, fun, fascinating time at the National Board of Education.
You are in for a treat tonight. And we're just going to jump right ahead into it and start with announcements. Ms. Frog, do you have any announcements? Mr. Hayes? He's thinking.
I can't say I have an announcement. I attended a, and I complimented Dr. Rester. It's a wonderful tour of Julia Green Elementary a couple of weeks ago, so I just wanted to give a shout out to the families and parents and staff at Julia Green who made it look so great and warm and welcoming for prospective students next fall.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Pinkston?
Yeah, just three congratulations to various members of the MNPS team. First, to Mr. Henson and his team. We got notice yesterday from the Association of School Business Officials International that MNPS has, for the fifth consecutive year, been honored with the Meritorious Budget Award, really a testament to Dr. Register, Mr. Henson, the staff, and of course, the board's commitment to responsible and transparent budget practice. So, five years in a row. That's good stuff. Congratulations also to Laura Hanson, our Director of Information Management and Decision Support, who recently joined the Board of Directors of the Data Quality Campaign, DQC, which is led by our friends Amy Gudera, Paige Kowalski, and others, has been working hard for almost a decade to ensure that educators, families, policymakers have access to high-quality information about our schools and school systems. The fact that MNPS is at the table with DQC is really a big deal, and I imagine is going to yield benefits for our kids as Laura keeps us at the leading edge of the national conversation. And then I finally, seriously belated congratulations to our own Keisha Ray on her election as President of the International Society for Technology in Education, also called ISTI. With 100,000 members worldwide, ISTI is the top association of educators and education leaders committed to empowering connected learners in a connected world. ISTI is a leading voice in Washington for, among other things, increasing the nation's investment in the E-Rate program to help connect our students to high-speed broadband. So, congratulations, Keisha. We really appreciate your service and leadership. That's all I had.
Thank you. Ms. Shepherd?
Just have one quick announcement. For those of us that were fortunate enough to attend the TSBA convention and got to hear the McGabbic Show Choir, last Thursday night, I attended their full fall show with all their choral programs on the stage. And I have to tell you that it was two hours of wow. They have so much talent, and it was so entertaining. And they do an entire genre of music. They do gospel. They do current. They do some tunes that were, I think, older than I could remember. So, they're very talented, and I just wanted to give a shout out to Mr. Mitch Fuller, who directs that choral program all by himself. And they're going to do Grease next spring with the new theater teacher, so I'm really pumped about that.
Grease is the word.
It is.
Ms. Cattell?
Yes, I have several. Thank you. In October, I had the opportunity to announce the achievement scores and satisfactory status to the student body at Maplewood High School. The celebration was attended by city officials, elected officials, community partners. And after the assembly, I had the opportunity to tour for the second time the Automotive Technology Training Center, run by Ms. Twana Williams, better known as TJ. TJ is the only woman, and she's in the audience tonight, TJ is the only woman in the state of Tennessee who teaches automotive mechanics. She serves as adjunct faculty at Tennessee Tech and Nashville State Community College. TJ finds ways to relate her students' background knowledge, background interest, knowledge. According to her, every area of automotive can be related to every academic that affects our students' learning and comprehension. She explained to me how she relates biology to the workings of a car engine. She was way over my head. And she makes clearly instruction relevant to the students' lives. If you have car problems, I want to recommend the Automotive Center at Maplewood High School to not only my fellow board members, but also to our viewing public. These students are highly skilled, and I know you will be pleased with the results. Thank you, Twana Williams, for your leadership, for your love and expertise that you provide to your students at Maplewood every day. Thank you. Congratulations on the powerful story. Channel Four aired last night, again, at Maplewood High School, where the students are involved in meaningful learning activities. These opportunities, driven again by students' interest and passion, they support our students' community, our students and community, to overcome hopelessness, to drive ambition, and to inspire dreams. Congratulations to Dr. Woodard and his staff. Yay Panthers! I am proud to announce that the Hunter's Lane Band won the first place in TSU's 2013 Homecoming Parade. Yay, Ra, Go Warriors! Last but not least, I attended the band competition at Glenview High, Glencliff High School, where students from across metro schools, as well as bands from surrounding counties, participated in the competition. And Dr. Judy Blackwelder is in her 28th year of being the band director at Glencliff High School. Under her direction, the marching band concert and jazz bands have received widespread recognition and earned numerous honors at area, state, and regional events. Under Dr. Blackwelder's leadership, the Marching Gold Band has twice represented Tennessee in the Kentucky Derby Parade. They won the Most Entertaining Show Award at Vanderbilt's Marching Invitational, and they were Nashville's official Ronald McDonald Circus Band for many years. Glencliff is one of the few bands that participates yearly in the Veterans Day Parade, and they are highly appreciative. Judy is listed in Who's Who of Outstanding Women Educators and is a state runner-up for the Outstanding Young Educator. Dr. Judy Blackwelder has been a recipient of the HCA Educational Foundation Award and has created musical arrangements for, listen to this, Amy Grant, Reba McIntyre, Leigh Anne Womack, and the marching bands of Tennessee Tech University and the University of Alabama. These are phenomenal accomplishments. Dr. Blackwelder serves as department chair, where she also teaches beginning and advanced piano. Congratulations on your many achievements in the 28 years as band director of Glencliff High School. That concludes my announcements. Thank you.
Okay. And just a couple of announcements, and then we'll get into our work session. We had a mock school board meeting scheduled for tonight, and because of the iffy weather, we've rescheduled that to December 10th at 4:00 p.m. It will be held here in the conference room. So, I encourage everyone to, I'm sorry, here in the boardroom, everyone to come out and see these remarkable students. I actually had an opportunity to meet with several of them, and they are so excited, and they're super excited that Dr. Register is going to be sitting in as their director of school. So, it should be interesting. Again, that's December 10th at 4:00. December 3rd is our next Diversity Management Task Force meeting. It will also be here in the central office in the boardroom at 5:00 p.m. Winter graduations are getting underway. December 17th, Academy at Old Cockrell will be at 2:00 p.m. And also on December 17th, Virtual School will be at 7:00 p.m. On the 18th will be Academy at Opry Mills, and that will be at 9:00 a.m. And remember, board members, no work session in December. My gift to you. So, having said that, we will go ahead and get started. Now you want to make the announcement?
I'm sorry. I wasn't up to speed. So, let me, I had to wake up a minute. I do have one really quick one. I got to participate last week in the Nashville Adult Literacy Banquet, which is a really fabulous program that's out of the Cone School. And I was there with Mayor Dean, and we were both guest speakers. And they really do some fantastic work. They have a lot of native non-readers, but they also have a lot of immigrant non-readers. And I learned that one out of eight Nashvillians can't read, which is a pretty high number. So, they're doing some really wonderful work, really moving stories, touching stories. And I was very pleased to be part of their program and want to give them a shout out for all the good work that they do. It's all volunteer. Oh, and if you want to volunteer to be a tutor for a non-reader, you can go to the Nashville Adult Literacy Council website to sign up.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And I actually do, I did omit a couple of things. Thank you to all of our principals for a day that participated this week. It was phenomenal. I was at Kennedy Middle School, and I have now, my new best friend is a fifth grader named Dylan. He was awesome. So, he just was an incredible young man, and I had an incredible day. There were, and I forget the number, over 100, can't remember the exact number, volunteers for principal of a day, for a day. And the stories that I heard coming back from the people that participated were phenomenal, blown away. I didn't know that was going on in metro schools, so maybe we should do it more than once a year. One other thing, too, that I wanted to read to you guys, because I thought this was fantastic. I got this a while ago, and I never had an opportunity to read it, but this is from Tim Mason in Fulton County Schools in Atlanta, Georgia. This is congratulating the Antioch High School Band. Dear Dr. Coger, I wish to extend my sincere congratulations to the students and the director of the Antioch High School Band for their outstanding performance at the prestigious Contest of Champions held last Saturday at Middle Tennessee State University. This was, again, in October. As the highest-scoring band among those in Class A, the Antioch Band was selected to perform in exhibition during that evening's finals competition. To my knowledge, this is a first for the Antioch Band and the director, Mr. Scott Miller. As a music educator, I was most impressed with the quality of music literature Mr. Miller had selected for his students, and the afternoon, and the attention to detail, which was evident in the board's preparation for this, and the band's preparation for this performance. Your school and community deserve to be very proud of your exceptionally hard-working and talented students and teacher. Congratulations to them on a job well done. So, congratulations to the Antioch High School Band. And so, really, I think, unless somebody else has something, that concludes our announcements. All right. And we will keep an eye on the weather in case it turns ugly, but we will move right ahead. And Dr. Register, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll ask our first staff members to come up, who are going to present the Strategic Compensation Plan. Katie, come on up. Bring your folks up as you like. Let me say that Susan Thompson regrets being out of town tonight, but actually, I think she's on vacation with her family for Thanksgiving week. Katie is going to start this presentation. Katie, if you will, introduce the members here. Let me just say very quickly that strategic compensation is something that we've been working on for a number of months now. And it was, I was very pleased when the state made some changes in compensation, some state-required changes, that we had already started on this. So, I feel like we have a legitimate, several month head start, really looking at ways to modify compensation, and look forward to giving you a draft presentation. This is not a final recommendation. This is a work in progress for us, but we felt like it was an appropriate time to let you see where we're going, let you think about where we're going, and have a good conversation about it. So, Katie, I'll turn it over to you.
Just as a reminder, if you guys would remember to use a mic so that everyone could hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Am I, no, not on. No.
Go slowly, let's go slowly. Let's see. Try it now. Hello? No? There it is.
Thank you, Dr. Register. Chairman Mays. We are here to discuss the work that the district has been doing for the last six months on strategic compensation. I want to first introduce my colleagues who are up here with me. To my far right, we have Angela Assaloni, who is a teacher mentor at Edison Elementary and is also a graduate of the Teacher Leadership Institute. She's been with the district roughly five years? Yeah. Shannon Black, who I believe you know as our Director of Talent Management, oversees all of the evaluation work in the district. Teresa Wagner, who is a PE teacher at Graymar and has been with the district for 16 years. And then we have Sheila Armstrong, our Director of Compensation. So, we wanted you to hear from two teachers. We want this conversation to be very authentic. We want you to push and ask hard questions. We want our teachers to respond with their real opinions about what this work is, not about some, you know, statement that we've asked them to make by any means. So, we really want this to be as real as we can make it. With that, I'll just go forward to the first slide. You all have the deck in front of you as well. We're going to start by just placing a little context on the conversation, why we're doing this work in the first place. Then we're going to give you an overview of the feedback that we received from teachers for several months throughout the work, and we'll talk about the various ways that we received that feedback. We'll dive into the draft recommendations, and I encourage you to stop me, ask questions, stop any colleagues who are speaking at the time, because we want you to make sure that you really understand what we are recommending at this point. We'll touch on the plan sustainability, and then dive into next steps, timeline, where we're going to get future feedback and edits to the plan going forward. So, why strategic compensation? Two very simple reasons. We want to attract great teachers to our district, and we want to retain great teachers in our district. There's a lot of movement nationally around strategic compensation. Race to the Top put a lot of emphasis on strategic compensation. However, at the end of the day, politics aside, we're doing this work because we think it's what's best for teachers. Dr. Register has said repeatedly that if this is not something that is positive for teachers, we shouldn't be doing it, and we all who have been driving this work really, really believe that. On top of that, we have some legal situations with the state that have happened over the past five years. In 2007, the Tennessee Legislature passed a differentiated pay plan law that required LEAs to, required school districts to adopt differentiated pay plans. That was never funded or enacted, and so it kind of just fell flat. Nobody really did much with it. In 2013, we decided that it was a good time for us to move ahead with thinking about different ways to reward and recognize our teachers, and so we applied for an IAF grant, which is an Innovative Accelerated Fund grant from the state, funded through the federal government. And we received that grant to go towards planning purposes for strategic compensation, differentiated pay, just to begin looking into it. We got that grant started in January of 2013, and in the spring, we started convening the Steering Committee, of which all five of us are members, and we'll talk about more in just a second. In June, the State Board of Education, recognizing that the Tennessee Legislature had not, I mean, recognizing that districts had not really followed up with the differentiated pay law from 2007, enacted a series of guidelines to require differentiated pay. And then in 2014, 15-school year, all districts will be required to adopt guidelines for their new pay plans that align to the state board's differentiated pay guidelines. So, we just wanted to give you a little bit of timeline, recognizing that other things are going on in the state, as well as us trying to get out ahead, as Dr. Register said, of the mandate to do this work next fall regardless. So, what did we do, and how did we get here? As I mentioned, under the IAF grant, we convened a Steering Committee, made up of four educators, four teachers, two administrators, one assistant principal, and one principal. The head of the Parent Advisory Council, Shelley Baldwin, I believe she's presented to the board before. The president of the MNEA, Stephen Henry. Representative from higher education, which was Candace McQueen, the dean at Lipscomb University. And then we also had Sheila, myself, our chief financial officer, Chris Henson, Shannon, board member, we had, Dr. Brandon was on the committee as well, and then a few other staff members.
Will Cox.
And Dr. Will Cox, from the Leadership and Learning Team. So, we had a nice representation, we thought, from the district offices, but then also we really wanted the emphasis to be on the educators. So, with that Steering Committee, whoops, I keep forgetting to address my slides here. With that Steering Committee, the Steering Committee was charged with analyzing multiple options, and we looked at things that other districts had been doing across the nation. We looked at things that some districts in the state of Tennessee had been doing. We wanted to get as much stakeholder opinion as possible, so we did a survey of all of the teachers in our district, and we also held several focus groups. And then the ultimate charge of the Steering Committee was to present a plan to you, which is what we're doing today. We want to emphasize that this is a work in progress. The Steering Committee was not charged with finalizing a plan or stamping a plan for approval. This was simply a straw man of sorts to bring forward so that we could begin the conversation with you all, with the state, and of course, with our teachers, to really find out what's good about the plan, what's not good, what needs to change, and what needs to be really recognized. So, any questions before I move forward with the teacher feedback? Thomas? Okay. Recognizing that it's really impossible to do this work without hearing from the people who it is affecting, we surveyed 6,000 teachers, a little over 5,500 teachers in the district. We had a 25% response rate. We did the survey twice to get as many people to respond as possible. We had a great time analyzing those responses, which were lengthy and quite opinionated, both for and against any changes we might make. So, I'm going to walk through some high-level takeaways from those, from that survey. And the first is, one of the questions we asked is, what do you think are the strengths of the current salary structure? 45% of teachers recognized that, of the teachers surveyed, recognized that the current salary structure is beneficial because it recognizes experience in advanced degrees. Another 20% liked that it's very predictable and transparent. Almost 20% really flagged the starting salary of $40,000 as being a big plus for this salary structure. 10% or so thought that the competitive pay built into the structure with a bonus, and then a few more around how it's fair and equitable, and then a small minority had, liked the fact that they had the 12-month pay option. Nothing terribly surprising there, but what we really found to be more interesting was the weaknesses that were in the current salary structure. Almost 50% of teachers believed that the structure, the salary, current salary structure, the pay is just simply too low, and that it caps out after 15 years if you have a bachelor's or higher if you have a master's. Another 10% don't feel like it adequately recognizes the work that goes into getting an advanced degree, or the work that is, that comes with experience in the district. 10% really felt like there were flaws in the structure simply because there are no increases in the first five years. In the current salary structure, we freeze the first five years of a teacher's salary, and so we'll talk about that a little bit more in just a second. No pay increases for five years. Another 9% or so didn't think, don't think that the current structure recognizes performance and recognize that as a significant weakness. 5% found no weaknesses in this current structure, and then a handful of other topics that we definitely delved into when we were developing our recommendations. And then the other final big question of the survey was, should performance be a part of teacher salaries? 52% of our respondents said no, it should not be. 44% said yes, and 4% said maybe with stipulations. So, on top of the survey, which is of course a very high-level representation of the 25% of teachers who responded, we also wanted to get into a little bit more quality conversations with teachers themselves through focus groups. So, we held four focus groups and invited teachers to participate. They were very excited and vocal about their opinions in the focus group. They were great. Actually, it was a very worthwhile effort, and I'm going to walk through some of the very high-level findings and pull out some quotes that I thought were particularly telling from that work. The first finding is that teachers really did like that the current structure is transparent, it's equitable, they know where they stand on it, but they also recognize that there are some flaws with the structure. We did have some feedback that there's no incentive to work harder, because if the teacher down the hall isn't doing anything more, why should I be doing anything more because we get paid the same? We had some, a lot of comments on recognizing that the current pay structure is equitable, and we really need to model that in whatever we push forward, that we really, everybody needs to have the opportunity for increases in pay under the new structure. And then we had a lot of questions about really what was going to be based, what the non-tested areas we're going to be using in the new structure. So, we have 70, roughly 68% of our teachers are in the non-tested subjects, and how would they fall in a new structure? The current structure recognizes everybody equally. So, those were some of the key pieces of that finding.
I'm sorry. How many, what was the percentage you cited as teachers in non-and non-tested areas?
Yeah, I think it's roughly around 68%. Dr. Changis is here. He might know better. Somewhere around there, yeah. It's, last year it was hot, it was lower because we tested K through 2 with the SAT-10 test, but this year it'll pop back up to about, I think, 68%. But I can find that out for you.
Thanks.
The second key finding was that teachers, 100% of our teachers in our focus groups really felt that we should do, across the board, had support for tying pay increases to advanced degrees. So, we had no one who thought that advanced degrees should not be part of a pay plan. Everyone thought that they should continue to be recognized. However, we did have very lively conversations around what advanced degrees should be, which ones should be recognized, what should those degrees be in, and a lot of other details, and we'll get into how that influenced the recommendations tonight. One pull-out quote was simply, "We are an education institution. We should always be encouraging continuous learning." Another key finding, mixed reactions to tying pay to leadership opportunities. We talked about whether the pay plan should include stipends or a pay increase if you're serving in a particular leadership role. There was some worry about favoritism, and you'll see the quote there, that principals already have their favorites, what's to prevent them from just selecting them. But we also had a percentage of participants really think that leadership roles should be recognized with additional pay because they're really spending a lot of time on them and should be recognized for their value. The next finding, teachers definitely had reservations about using TEAM, the Team Evaluation System, as the measure of individual performance. We heard about the arbitrariness of some, of the implementation that some teachers felt around TEAM in terms of the observations. Are they being observed by their observer in the same way that the teacher down the hall is being observed? Is it normed, or is it consistent from building to building? We'd also heard the favoritism argument in this piece as well, and a lot of conversation around non-tested teachers. If TEAM is basing non-tested teachers' evaluations on their observation scores and the school-wide composite, how is that, you know, what does that mean in relationship to a tested teacher? So, we've spent a lot of time talking through that. We also talked about whether or not focusing a pay plan on an individual team score for individual teachers would not, would somehow hinder collaboration among teachers, and whether that would be something that we needed to take into effect, into account. So, all of that on the table, the TEAM discussions were definitely the most interesting. And then finally, the definite across-the-board support, one of our focus groups was with principals, and every member of both, of all four focus groups said that the make-it-or-break-it for this plan really resides in culture in our buildings. And if we have a culture of trust and respect, then a pay plan based on performance makes sense, and if we don't, then we'll struggle in that area. And so, you see some of the quotes that I, that we pulled out from the focus groups. One that I have, that's really stuck with me is, you know, "We've done a really good job communicating what you can do to lose your job, but haven't done anything to say how you get to stay." So, we thought a lot about how we want to build a plan that recognizes and rewards teachers for the things we want to recognize and reward them for, and for the great work that they're doing every day, and not just use the TEAM evaluation model for something that feels more like punishment.
You know, I think Ms. Fearing had said this before, that I think a lot of the sense among teachers in school is that, this very thing, and this spoke to me when I read it as well. We talk a lot about what you're not going to do, what you shouldn't do, and if you do this, then this is going to happen, but we don't spend as much time promoting the fantastic teachers we have in this district. And I'm so glad to see this in here.
Yeah.
And we need to make sure that we build some sort of plan around this. It's a very powerful statement.
And it wasn't just said, it wasn't just said once. It's been said multiple times by a variety of stakeholders, so.
And I think that this board probably has had quite a few of those conversations as well. So, kudos.
Well, we'll walk through the plan, and hopefully, we've taken that, we feel that we've taken it into account, and we want to make sure that that's being recognized as much as possible. Okay. Any comments from my colleagues? Do you want any? Yeah? They definitely will want to hear from you. I can guarantee that.
You're not leaving until we hear.
We'll put them on the spot. You want to say something, Teresa?
I was just going to say that the members of the Steering Committee know that I'm not one to be shy and not speak what's on my mind. But I did just want to say, on this last slide as well, I got to view this presentation earlier today, and that same comment stood out to me as, we're out to me, is we're constantly, and not from within the local, but at the state level as well, we're constantly bombarded with, "If you don't meet these measures, you are bad, you are gone, you will lose your job." But there's, there's nothing that says, "Well, if you do this great job, here's your reward," so that this really stood out for me as well.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I don't mean to be hogging your mic here. Okay, so, we'll walk through the draft recommendations. I do want to take time to do this, and so please stop me at any time if you feel like it's something that isn't as clear. We started the work with the steering committee by developing a set of value statements. What do we really want this work to be doing at the end of the day? Why do strategic compensation of any kind? And we grounded it in the fact that we wanted it to be fair and equitable, and by that, we wanted there to be an equitable opportunity to participate in any plan that would be developed, as well as just making it transparent, clear, and fair for anybody who would be able to, so that they'd be able to understand where they fall in the system. We wanted a plan that would promote collaboration, so not hinder some of the, from the previous slides when we were talking about, the fact that it might not promote collaboration. We really took that seriously, and so we wanted to take into account any extenuating circumstances that might inhibit collaboration. Obviously, we wanted it to be easy to understand, these things can get very confusing very quickly. We wanted to focus on attracting great teachers specifically to high-need schools and subject areas, and that was something that we spent a considerable amount of time on. You'll see in the current plan that we continued with attracting teachers to high-need schools, but we did have a lengthy conversation around whether or not that should be something that is prioritized. Obviously, we want it to be something that incents our great teachers to stay in MMPS, and then of course, finally, we want it to be sustainable, the big question. So what does it look like? I'm actually going to let Shannon walk through this, if you don't mind. Shannon?
Okay.
Your stick of hand for me.
Okay, so, when it comes to TEAM evaluation, I guess, that's why I take the mic, right? So, one of, one of the first things to note is that it's, your step increase will be based on your TEAM, which would be your overall level of effectiveness. And so, what is a steering committee, we decided was, the higher your overall level of effectiveness, the more benefit in your pay. We have also had many conversations around the non-tested, and we continue to hear that daily. We heard it today, we heard it yesterday, and we will continue to hear that because it's something that we have to address, and we have to continue to seek answers around. What we came up with as, as an option is to build in a safety net for those that are non-tested teachers. And what I mean is, we have about, I think it's 700 teachers that have observation scores of higher than a 3, 3.5, but the school growth measure and the achievement measure that's often tied to school growth measures is pulling down their overall score. And we want to look at, in those cases, for those individuals, we discussed as a steering committee that we would only look at your observation piece if that discrepancy exists, because we feel that we want it to be fair to teachers, and so we thought that that was a way to do that. So, we're going to recognize teachers that get 3s, we're going to recognize teachers that get 4s, and we're going to recognize teachers that get 5s on their overall composites.
So we just, it was very important to us that we recognized that the, that some of our non-tested teachers are knocking, that many of, most of our non-tested teachers probably are knocking the ball out of the park, and are doing a great job every day, but at the end of the day, their TEAM composite is a 1 or a 2 because their school-wide is pulling them down. And we don't, we don't think that that's a, we don't want to promote a system that discourages those teachers from continuing in MMPS. We also have a career pathway structure that is part of this work. We heard from many teachers that they don't really have a place to grow in our district. You either go straight into administration, or you leave the district, you leave Educationally Together. There's no kind of real teacher leadership opportunities, and so we wanted to recognize that on a career pathway by having different designations, and with each designation would come a series of opportunities that you would be eligible for. For instance, if you're a professional teacher, you might be eligible for specific leadership roles, which also come with specific pay increases that a developing teacher and a new teacher may not be eligible for. The criteria for those different bands has not been set yet. We just wanted to capture that we are recognizing that we like the idea of a cap, of a pathway approach. The master teacher would be therefore eligible for certain roles that would be even that much more, you know, prestigious as well as compensated for them. Recognizing that our teachers, we heard loud and clear that they did want to continue to include advanced degrees in any model, we included the, at advanced degree, we did consolidate the, what are now, I think, six lanes or five lanes?
Five.
Five lanes into three. And so, we used to have a bachelor's lane, a master's lane, a master's plus, an EDS, an EDD, and a PhD, thank you. So we've consolidated, we've compressed those three to a bachelor's, a master's, and a doctorate degree. We heard from Dean McQueen from Lipscomb about a lot of research on advanced degrees. We looked ourselves into what the research was saying about advanced degrees. There, we did want to recognize that we are an education institution, and that we value growing and learning at all, at all times of your life, but the individual value of a master's plus or certain other, you know, just a little bit more, a couple more hours on something may not be as beneficial for us to be spending our money on. So we chose as a steering committee to consolidate those lanes. That's still up in the air, it's open for discussion, and I encourage you all to ask questions about that tonight, and ask each other's questions. The EDS lane, we decided we would like to make that a one-time bonus. So if you receive an EDS degree, you would get a one-time bonus for that, for recognizing that contribution. And that is also true for content-specific endorsements that the district is in need of. So if we're short on chemistry teachers, and you get a chemistry endorsement, certification, you can, you would get a one-time bonus. Same is true for special ed, EL, whatever the district is in need of at that particular year, we would potentially pay one-time bonuses for that. So, the final piece of the plan is leadership roles and additional bonuses, one-time bonuses. We are moving towards school-based budgeting in our district, and you'll be hearing more about that if you, I think you've had a little bit of, on that topic already, but you'll be hearing a lot more about it coming, you know, in the next several months, I'm sure. With that work, principals will have the opportunity to select specific leadership roles from a menu of options. So if they would like a dean of culture in their building, they'll be able to select that and pay that dean more based on specific responsibilities. And that will also be included for things like a teacher leader, parts of what we were talking about on the career pathway earlier. If you follow, if you're a teacher mentor and your principal wants that to be a full-time position, then you could be getting more money for that role, etc. So the school-based budgeting is going to allow flexibility for leadership opportunities that we don't currently have in our, in our system. We also recognize that we would like to continue to support recognition of national board certification, as long as you're teaching in your content certification area. We also, the state provided transfer bonuses to high-need schools this year, and we would like to model that plan. And then, we also would like for there to be a school-wide performance bonus. Thank you, sorry. For schools, if a school receives a T-VAS composite of a 5, the school would receive a lump sum that could be decided by the leadership team what they would like to do with that money. It could be going to, to bonuses for all teachers, it could be going to the computers, it could be, whatever they deem necessary for their school. So that's the leadership roles and opportunities. So, now, this, I want to walk through the certificated salary schedule. There's a copy of it in front of you, looks like this, a big table of numbers. This is the current salary structure, so this is what is currently in play right now in the district. The shaded gray areas are frozen steps in our current system. So you'll see that if you have a bachelor's degree and you start in the district with zero years of experience, you're frozen until your sixth year in the district. And so, same is true for master's degrees. So you'll see where we freeze a lot of lanes at the beginning of the, of the structure, of the schedule, and then we also do it on the back end of the schedule. So if you're, if you have a bachelor's degree in the district, your, your salary is frozen at year 15 until you reach 25 years in the district, okay? And the reason why I am highlighting that is recognizing that in our current system, just over 50% of all of our educators are eligible for a pay increase. So, because we have frozen lanes, only 50% are eligible. So, we want to have a model that does not freeze that many, that much, that much of the salary structure, but we also want everyone to be eligible for a pay increase in our model.
Weren't we a year ago really excited about the $40,000 pay scale, and five years fixed at 50, that that was a, or 40, that that was a great thing?
Yes, it was a first step, and what we did was raise beginning pay from less than $35,000 to $40,000, and these folks can speak to the effectiveness of that. We've seen good results from that, in being able, in terms of recruitment and so forth. But, and at the time that we, if you'll recall it, the time that we talked about that, we also talked about a second phase, a second step, which is strategic compensation, which we're talking about now. So two parts. We implemented part one, and this is a proposal to get us to a part two.
Part two was compression of the pay, pay scale from the 25 years down to maybe 15.
Yeah.
But are people still excited about five years fixed, or now, six years fixed at 40?
So, the $40,000 is yes. We've heard greats talk about the $40,000. What is, what is not as exciting for teachers is that they're frozen there. And that was, as Dr. Regis just said, a phase one of moving. We needed to move our starting salary up to be nationally competitive, and that has been, that's been very exciting for the district, because we are now, we've been hearing very good things about that coming into the district. It's the frozen piece that we want to adjust now. So we don't want, we don't want to freeze the first five lanes, the first five steps.
The first five years you're now trying to unfreeze?
Yes.
So, a year ago, you had a year or two of research and study that this was a great idea?
No, that was based on what was, what was feasibly possible.
Financially feasible.
Yes, yes. So we, we would not, yeah, it was based on financial feasibility.
Quite simply, it was a strategy to raise beginning pay. We raised beginning pay, we were ranked, I think, if I recall, 36th in the state for beginning salary, the third.
Right, and I just, I could, either, either I'm forgetting, which is totally likely, possible, I just don't recall discussion around unlocking the five-year. I get it, right? I get it that five years is not fun to be locked at, at a certain number. I just had always thought that the phase two was really compressing the pay scale, so that after that fifth year, you know, it's, which you have the 15 years, down to 25. So that's just, that we're switching at least the thought. I understand it. I just don't recall that we had discussed it a year ago, and it was a pretty big shift a year ago, to this.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So prior to the, moving the base to 40, wherever the starting salary was with our bachelor's degree, where could a teacher potentially be in six years? If they don't move across with a degree, what was the most they could, their compensation could be after five years, before we increased it?
Yeah, I, I don't know the direct, the actual answer, but I mean, if we started, if the pay was roughly $35,000, they were not going to hit $40,000 in five years. Or if they did, they just barely hit it, so.
And actually, that's, from the teacher's perspective, that was one of the things that was most attractive about this change, was that it would take the six years for a new teacher to reach this $40,000 mark. So they hit it coming in right off the bat. Now, they stayed there for the six years, but at the end of that six years, they've earned more cumulatively than they did under the previous schedule. So that's where, from the teacher's perspective, that's where the excitement came in on this. It afforded the opportunity to make more money more rapidly.
All right. Any other questions about the current structure? So, walking through some key features of the new model, there, right now, we have a couple of options on the table, but we are recommending that there not be a cap-out. So you can continue to earn money, as long as you're an effective teacher in our district, for however long you teach in our district. You continue to earn more money, additional money. We also are recommending that there not be a five-year freeze for new teachers. And the current recommended model, 100% of all certificated educators would be, would be eligible for a pay increase in a year. So, let's take a look at what this means in real numbers. And our district average is $49,800. That's what, that's what the average, the average of all teacher pay in our district. And to get to that number currently in our current pay scale would take 15 years for a teacher with a bachelor's degree, regardless of what their TEAM score was, regardless of what their performance was, it would take 15 years to get to that district average. However, if we look at the new system and under the features that we just explained, a teacher with a TEAM composite of three and a BA degree would hit that district average in 12 years. A teacher with a TEAM of four and a BA degree would hit it in eight years, and then a TEAM of five would get to that district average in 49, in 49 years, in six years. And so, the reason why this is so compelling for us is because now we can go on the road and say, "Come to our district, it's a great place to work," not to mention, you can be making $50,000 while you're still in your 20s. That is a message that we want to be sending, and we also want to be recognizing our veteran teachers too, but that is just one message, one way of recruiting people to our district that is very compelling for Okay, so this was a slide that we added late, so you've got the handout in front of you, it's not in your deck. But the, we wanted to just walk through what this looks like for specific teachers, and then I'll welcome any other comments from the team here. If a teacher has a BA and six years of experience, and they want to stay in the current system, they'd be making $41,000 there. But in the new system, if they opt in, they would be making 42, and then continue to increase based on their TEAM rating. If a teacher has a master's degree with 10 years of experience, they, if they stayed on the current structure, they would get a small-step increase of, and then hit $50,000. If they opt into the new system, they'd get an additional $1,000 under the plan. Teacher C with a PhD and 25 years of experience would increase his or her salary by about $2,000 because of the rating of a TEAM 4. The additional compensation that, on top of this, in the form of one-time bonuses and school-wide awards, is also over and above what their base pay would be. The recommended rollout, we would like to suggest that we shift to the base pay structure, and, which is the TEAM rating, all the work on the TEAM rating. And then, we would have an opt-in option for current employees. All new employees to the district would be required to opt into the new system, but we would have two systems running. We, we think that this plan is, is strong enough to be appealing to a large percentage of our teachers, and we think once people do the numbers and realize where they would slot, that it would be quite beneficial to opt in. However, we recognize that everybody might not feel that way, and so we want to give that option, and then have the automatic enrollment for new hires. We want to phase in probably, just for sustainability purposes, some of the other pieces, the bonuses, the transfer, etc.
Excuse me?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, please. Explain to me the opting in piece again. So, I'm a teacher today, and I can either choose, so I've been here four years. So I'm making $40,448 a year. You're going to come to me next year and give me an option to opt in to a new pay structure? That, what happens to me then, immediately? If I say, "Yes, I want to be a part of that new pay structure," am I still making 40, 448?
So, by state law, we cannot lower your salary from the previous year. So everybody will maintain at least their current salary, and then you would be slotted into the new system based, and there's, there's lots of scenarios that we haven't played out yet, but based on your advanced degree, based on your experience in the district, whatever it is.
Right here, I'm a bachelor's with four years, and I'm making 448. That's the scenario I'm talking about.
Yeah, so, I mean, do you want to hit that, Sheila, but we don't have- But I, we don't have, we haven't played out each scenario that could possibly happen. But what we are suggesting is that you will have the option to either continue on the current salary structure and stay at $40,448 for the next two years, and then bump up for a step when you hit your sixth year. Or you can opt into the new plan, which will reward the following criteria, your team evaluation ratings, your advanced degrees, and so you can, and we've also talked about having a tool where people can go online and figure out what that would mean. I have a master's and I have six years of experience, should I opt in or not? So they can see automatically what it would be in relationship to the current system.
Cheryl's already threatened me about taking too much time. I'm just kidding.
No, no, this is, no, I'm just kidding.
You're, you're good. We're not even at 6 o'clock yet, so you're so good.
I guess what I'm trying to understand is, I'm opting in, so dollars aside, what I'm really opting into is whether or not my team evaluation scores will have an impact on my pay.
Yes.
I still will get evaluated.
Yes.
So how are those scores used if I'm not opted into a new pay structure?
Well, they're used to determine, they're used to determine your professional growth opportunities, they're used to have tenure licensure.
So at a very superficial level, when I hear that, those scores are either a punishment if I'm not opted in, or a reward. I mean, I may be very superficial, but if they're only used to determine my opportunities, they can be more prohibitive in one scenario and very advantageous to me in another scenario. So my other concern is, how does that address what we've heard was a big driver, the feedback that said, I want to know, we talk a lot about how, I mean, I think you still, you perpetuate that mentality of, I'm being told all the things that could happen to put me out versus all the things I need to do to stay. You see what I'm saying? In the two different scenarios, I'm either perpetuating that mentality under, if I don't opt in, and it only becomes the converse of that if I opt in.
So a couple of options. One, we could just do away with an opt-in option and have everybody, you're required to opt in, because that would adhere to the values that the steering committee set forth, which were, that we really did want to recognize that the, that our great teachers need to be recognized and rewarded. And so the team evaluation should not be punitive, or only punitive, it should be something that really honors and recognizes the great work that's happening in our schools. So we could just do away with the opt-in at all, at all costs. I mean, that was something we definitely talked about. However, we, we recognize that some teachers did not enjoy that, that option, and so we kept it in as a recommendation, but I'm.
And I'm just, I'm just trying to just make sure we're very transparent.
Transparent. Yep. There will be some teachers who, no matter how great this plan looks, and no matter what the opportunities are for them, who will be skeptical of it. They'll be teachers who've been in the system for a long time, they've become very comfortable with the way things are, maybe resistant to change, and they won't be comfortable with making this change because they won't understand it immediately. And I think that the, the way it was discussed and the way I understood it is that the opt-in would only be available for the first few years, and then at some point, everyone would have to be on the new schedule. But that having this opt-in gives those teachers that will be resistant, the opportunity to see how it works, and to actually see where it's benefiting others, and where it might potentially benefit them as well. Especially those teachers who, like me, I'm in that gray area where my salary's frozen. And I love this idea because it means I come out of that gray area. And it means I have the opportunity to increase my pay, whereas if I would choose to not opt in, I'm still stuck. I'm still where I am. And just for clarification, for the last two years, I have been a Level 5 teacher. So I would benefit greatly from this. If I'd been a Level 2, 3 teacher, I think I might be at that place where I'd be a little bit skeptical. So I think that the opt-in allows that cushion for those teachers who are going to be skeptical, who are not going to be comfortable with the new system, to see how it works, and to see the potential for benefit. And then, once they opt in, they can participate more completely in the process.
Did that answer your question?
It does. And I'm, I'm not, I just want to make sure that I'm hearing what I'm hearing.
Yeah. And that's what we want you to push.
Yeah. And so I think part of the, the other question that that raises for me is, even though we're trying to push a particular culture, do we have a consistent culture if we've got these two groups of people? I mean, essentially, you've got two groups of people that are being, or at least are viewing their evaluations differently. And they're viewing and, and they're, they're seeing that some, one person's evaluation may be, maybe, perception, may be being used in a different way as a reward system versus something else. And I don't, I'm not saying that that's the intent.
Sure.
I'm just saying on the surface, and as you read through it, as I read through it, and hear the different language that's being used for someone who opts in, as you talk about their evaluations, versus someone who doesn't opt in, and we talk about their evaluations and their scores, that's not a consistent culture of how we want to use team, how we want it to be viewed by our teachers. So I'm just concerned that, and I, I think I like the idea of it eventually not being an option. I just don't know that the, what gets sown in the interim is healthy.
Yeah. And I think that's a great point. Sorry.
Thank you.
Hold on. We've got Ms. Sperring and then Ms. Shepherd.
First of all, I wanted to say that this is fabulous work, and I appreciate that you have a steering committee that brings in teachers, principals, administration, and our teachers' union. Those things are very important to getting a well-oiled system. I have a few comments about the things that I like and a few questions. I personally love the idea of teachers being able to opt in, because I think it helps teachers to trust the system if they have a voice. And in today's culture, they have, they don't have a voice in so many areas, that teacher morale is low, and I think this will be a positive boost. I love that we are continuing to recognize advanced degrees and reward teachers for, for those degrees. I think that the research you've done here is very helpful in understanding how team is lacking, and what kinds of things we can think about as we move forward. I like the idea that the plan hinges on culture and support, and that's imperative. And the culture of support and recognition, that's imperative for, for teachers and for this plan to work, and for retaining our best teachers. I want to go back to the focus group key findings, and I'll quote, "There is no incentive to work harder under the current model. I just get, I get paid just as much for going above and beyond as a teacher who does their minimum." And I want to say, when I read that, I was appalled. And in 35 years in education, or 35 years in the classroom, I had met maybe two teachers that might say something like that. So I hope that that was a very, very small number that she found here, because when we go into those classrooms every day, we're not going there saying, well, I, she gets paid more than me, so therefore I'm, I mean, it's just, it completely goes against what a teacher does and stands for and believes in, and, and her whole philosophy about teaching. So I needed to make that point. One of my concerns is that there, there is a transfer bonus for going into a high priority school. But once the teacher is in the high priority school, there's no bonus. Is that correct?
There's not one in the current proposal. The state did provide a retention bonus for high-performing teachers in priority schools this year. But you're correct that this plan does not include that.
And the concern for me about this is that as, when a teacher goes into a high priority school, her scores can go really low. Would you agree? You mean with the T-VOS?
I can also speak to kind of the flip side of that. We actually have teachers in some very high-achieving schools that are working diligently to stay at a Level 5 on their individual growth on T-VOS, that are contemplating going to a high-need school. So I actually think that there's two sides to every coin.
Yeah, that's true. That's a whole nother debate, because, I mean, we already know that we've got some questions and concerns about T-VOS. But when, I've taught in Kirkpatrick, and I've taught in some, some different schools, some more affluent schools. And it's like sometimes a war zone. And I would like to see you consider paying teachers more for being in a high-need school, because it's hard work.
Yeah.
I taught at Kirkpatrick, too.
Yay! Good.
I was just going to say that one of the reasons we didn't add that part in was, a lot of teachers, we felt like, when they're in this war zone, some of them feel like no amount of money or bonus that we give them is, could keep them there any longer. If it's hard, they're going to leave regardless. And that was one of the reasons we did not add it in here. We thought a bonus for when they come would be a great, a great start. But a lot of teachers I know that have taught, and myself included, in difficult situations, if it's really hard to go to work every day, eventually they're going to make the change, regardless of, if I'm getting a couple extra hundred dollars here or there. So that was one of the reasons we didn't put it into this model.
There would also be the issue of high priority, high priority schools are not going to remain the same from year to year to year. So this leaves flexibility with the district to identify those schools and to reward teachers with a bonus for choosing to go in and work with a challenging population. And I don't have T-VAS scores, but it's been my understanding that if you go from a school where with, you know, where it's easy to get those good scores, and you go to a school where it's more challenging, that there's more, actually more opportunity for growth because you have so much more room to bring those children up. So it actually would provide the teacher with more opportunity for growth. And that in itself might be an incentive. And there are some teachers who, I teach at Graymar, we're one of the schools that received the state recruitment retention bonus. And we had one teacher who transferred into our school, and I think that part of that was because she worked with our principal previously. So she was comfortable with the administration and felt comfortable coming into the school and receiving that bonus. And the other side of that is, we had 10 teachers who received a retention bonus, which I think speaks to, when you get the teachers in that are willing to do the work, and those teachers, myself included, didn't stay because of this money. We were appreciative of the money, we didn't stay because of the money, we didn't do anything differently in our teachings because of the money. But none of us will say that, oh, no, you can keep your $5,000, you know? I mean, none of us, none of us would say that. It's, it's just one of those pieces that says, we recognize this is a difficult situation, we appreciate your willingness to take on this challenge. And, you know, and a one-time bonus, and with the retention bonus, that teacher did have to sign a commitment to stay in the school for two years. So that, with these types of bonuses, it really is about feeling recognized and acknowledging that what we do is a challenge. And so that, that's the way we see it.
How much are we talking about with this bonus for?
So that's, that's a great question, and that's on the table right now. We don't have a number because we, we don't have a budget in terms of what this is. We do have some numbers of what the move to the base pay structure might cost, but in terms of the bonuses, it's going to really be dependent on what we are allocated. And we've talked about, you know, the state allocated $7,000 for a transfer bonus, and then a $5,000 retention bonus in priority schools. We've talked about mimicking that model. We've talked about, you know, anywhere in between, you know, $1,000. I don't, I don't think we're going to see a lot of transfer at that level, but, you know, we, it's all on the table, up to 10 or more if we get, if we get funded.
Thank you.
Ms. Shepherd?
Just for a point of clarification, and then I do have some questions. Is, I was a little bit disturbed at the one graph that we saw where teachers didn't think that performance should be part of their salary. Will that be part of their evaluation?
So, so let me make sure I'm understanding your question. Do you mean that, will the, what, will what part be part of the evaluation?
It says, should performance be part of teachers' salaries?
Right. Yes. And so it's, performance is definitely, that's the whole value, 50% of their evaluation is already based on their observations, and then 35 is based on their achievement, growth scores, and then 15% on growth, roughly. It's a little bit different for non-tested. So the fact that 52% said that should performance not be a part of their teacher pay, it's still going to be, they'll still get evaluated regardless, they just don't think that, they just, that group did not think that it should be considered in a pay plan. Okay. However, we are moving in that direction. It's how we, regardless, by state mandate, but also because we think it's what will recognize and reward our teachers the best, so.
But given that we have such a large percentage of teachers that are in non-tested areas, there could be significant overlap between that 52% and those who are not tested. So what that could be saying is, you don't have a way to evaluate my performance, so why should my pay be based on something you have no way to evaluate?
Yeah, great point. And we did hear that the non-tested were more reserved. Did you want to say something?
That's 52%, and they're like 66%.
And I was just going to say that a lot of teachers are really fearful about team and team being tied to their pay, and that is why that number is so high. And that's why there's that maybe area as well, because we are, there's so many that are not tested, that where do we fall in this category?
Great point.
At the TSB convention that we attended last November, I'll use the word, we had the opportunity to hear Commissioner Huffman speak, and there was quite a bit of conversation around the state plan to do away with differentiated pay for advanced degrees. I mean, quite a bit of conversation about that. So I'm happy to see that we are encouraging advanced degrees, because as one of the blurbs said, we are in the education field.
And recognizing that point, this plan actually does have to be approved by the State Board of Education. We think that we have the pieces in place that, that will be a strong case for approval. However, it still does have to be approved, so.
It's disturbing. No sniggering kids. Any other questions? Ms. Pro.
I just wanted to add on to that. The state, the State Board of Education this summer passed a pay plan that does not recognize advanced degrees from the state level. But they also did say that LEAs can set up their salary schedules however they feel it's best for their district. So I don't see a problem with retaining these advanced degree lanes at all.
Annie did make that point, it's just that the dollars won't follow with that recommendation.
That's right. Ms. Pro.
Well, first of all, I want to say, I think this is really great work. I'm pleased to see that clearly a lot of thought's been put into this, and the teachers have really been taken into consideration, their thoughts on it. And I, and so, what, I continue to be, this is sort of a general comment, I guess, but I just continue to be concerned about this whole evaluation system, and I've raised concern about that before, and that's what you're hearing from the teachers. And I think that's something that we just, we need to be thinking about going, as we're going forward on, on this. And, and so taking maybe two steps back, you know, there are all these studies that say that merit pay doesn't work, and I, it now makes me want to revisit the studies. Merit pay, I guess, meaning that you are only rating a teacher based on the test scores. But you've got, that's a huge component of the, the evaluation model, and then you've got the two, you know, the two parts, and you've got the achievement, which is pretty much linked to socioeconomic, and then you've got T-VOS, which is fairly volatile. And so I don't know, this, I mean, I think maybe there's legislative work to be done around this. And I know, but I just think that, I feel the need to just at least make that comment as we're, we're basing everything on this model, which I still think is flawed. And the question is how we go about changing that.
So very valid concern, and it actually was the basis of almost all of our conversations. Two points that I want to touch on, and then I want Shannon to talk about the work that we're doing to try to improve the implementation of team. One, we could not agree more that this is contingent completely on the fidelity of implementation. So if we don't have both a culture that is respectful of progress and conversations and feedback, as well as quality implementation of the model, of not, not the plan, but of the team evaluation, this simply won't work. And so we are very aware of that, and Shannon will talk a second about what we're doing to make sure that that is where we're going in the future. we're going in the future. The second piece about merit pay doesn't work, I do want to touch on that just a second. The research around merit pay, and we dove deeply into the research, there are many, many studies out there that show a variety of things. Mostly, the biggest takeaway is what you just said, is that people think merit pay doesn't work. We are not implementing this, we are not requesting this proposal or suggesting this recommendation because we think that by paying a teacher more than, that his or her achievement will increase next year. We are implementing this plan, or we are recommending that this plan get implemented because we want to recognize and reward the teachers in our system. And we don't think our current structure does that. We don't think they're paid well enough, and we don't think they're paid enough for the hard work that they do every day. So I just want to touch on that. That's, I hear where you're coming from. I've read all the research myself. But we're not doing it to make sure that Teresa's colleagues are teaching as hard as she is. We're doing it because we want to reward Teresa.
Just a little bit about TEAM. We are working diligently, not just TEAM and capital, but in collaboration with Leadership and Learning, the executive lead principals, the lead principals, Katie, myself, we meet regularly to discuss and talk. There are also ways in which we can look at the observation data at the building level to see how principals are having inner rate of reliability and if they're norming and working together to really be fair to all of our teachers. So I do think that we have things in place. I do think that we're having honest conversations about TEAM and the evaluation, which I wasn't hearing a year ago. I wasn't in this position, but I was in the district. And so now it seems to be just a topic of conversation now more so than it was a year ago. So we are working diligently and trying to communicate and collaborate with the DOE as well, voicing concerns, asking for guidance and other things as well.
I see that it's all been very thoughtful and that you're trying to address some of the concerns around TEAM. But I just felt the need to at least.
Yeah. And we share, we share your feelings.
The issue, yeah.
Yeah, we understand.
Mr. Hayes and then Mr. Pinkston.
Thank you. Did you say, and I think I'm circling back to Ms. Shepherd's question around the pay for different academic degrees, that we've researched that? Have you done, did you find a high correlation? Did you say that we did not find a high correlation between advanced degrees and proficiency or the ability to teach well?
I did not say that, but that is true. There is not a high correlation between advanced degrees from the research that we looked at and quality teaching or student performance.
Right. Did we do our own research or we looked at outside research?
Yeah, we just looked at national research.
So do you think in the next year or so, we would look at our teachers and try to say, you know, who has a degree? And try to, I guess, look at that data and see what we're seeing internally?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
I'm just, I'm curious.
I am, too.
And is the, is the reason maybe that we didn't think about following the state with separating pay around degrees because we've done it for so long? It's, it's so ingrained in the culture? Is that it?
Well, I think that there were a lot of conversations about why we're doing this work. Should it be, should they be content specific? Should it be EDS? It should be, and we talked about every single possible scenario. At the end of the day, the steering committee made the call, and I welcome my colleagues to voice their thoughts as well as Dr. Register, that a desire to grow in your own learning is something that we recognize is important in our field. And so how, we don't think it's, it's a good idea across the board, no matter what, if you, you know, hear the basket weaving, et cetera. We don't, obviously, we wanted to get very far away from that. We also did not think that a master's plus was giving us as much benefit as, as you might hope. And it's a six, it's about 16% of our, of our faculty are paid on the master's plus scale. So there, there were several things that we weighed. At the end of the day, we thought, you know what? It is valuable to have a master's degree. It is valuable to us as an institution to have a PhD or an EDD. And that's why we kept it in. But there's not, there's not strong research.
Have we, have we done much to look at the, the, the quality of the programs?
Yeah.
To say, you know what, if we get an online degree from Phoenix and that's my master's and I'm not, I have no sense of Phoenix, I just look at their ads, right? They can have a fantastic program.
Their marketing is paying off.
Right? But to look at the quality of the program and say, you know what, these are the things that we value. And so I absolutely agree that, right, we should pursue continuing education. But I also want to make sure it's a quality program, that we know that the results are going to add value.
Yeah.
Versus, we're going to take basket weaving online and we're going to get a master's and that's going to get me an extra $4,000 a year. Are we doing any of that?
We are doing that in a recruitment effort sense. So we have looked at the, across the board, what our teachers are doing and where their preparation programs were. And we are very strongly aligning our recruitment efforts based on the programs that have reaped us the best benefits. We haven't done that, you know, in terms of the compensation work to date, but, you know, I agree that there's a lot of more research that we could be doing.
And a lot of our discussion about the higher degrees did look at the relevance of the degree and having it be content-specific and relevant to what the teacher is actually teaching. A math teacher getting a master's degree in art is not directly benefiting his teaching in the math class. But, you know, an art teacher may be getting a master's degree in math, now that art teacher can be moved into possibly a high need position.
And I would think, you know, maybe to add to that, is it a highly selective university that he or she is applying to? Or one that, that we can really see academic results that come out versus this is a program with open doors, if you, like an online college. If you show up and you, and you just do this for, you know, 120 hours, you get the degree. And I don't have a sense what, what we do or how we look at the quality, you know, should be content, content specific, for sure. But do we verify the quality of the educational institutions?
I know that locally, we have some high-quality teacher preparation programs, so I'm sure that those universities would.
Some, we have some.
Right.
But our own research shows that others.
Right. Yeah, so they're, and that's part of the reason why the research on advanced degrees is so not aligned to performance, we think, because, you know, does a degree at one institution equal the quality, the degree at another institution? I do want to add one thing about the research. When you're, when you're looking at studies about whether advanced degrees affect student performance, those studies are based on tested subjects only. And so there is something to be said about the fact that an advanced degree in some areas is not being captured in some of that research. Would you want to say something, Angel?
We're going to, you can go ahead and make a comment. We're going to move on to Mr. Pinkston, and then we'll let you finish your presentation.
Sure.
You've got another presentation after this one, so we really.
Totally. Yeah, sorry, we don't mean to monopolize.
I was just going to piggyback on what Teresa said and just say that one of the things we had talked about was that you wouldn't get, move on to that pay lane unless you had, you were in that position that was going to be, you were going to be using that degree. Does that make sense? Is that clear?
Yeah. You had to be teaching in that.
You had to be teaching in order to go on to that lane. So I have a, you know, masters in reading, but if I'm not teaching reading, then I wouldn't go on to that pay lane. That's kind of how we look at that.
Mr. Pinkston.
Thank you. I just kind of want to make sure I've got the semantics of this set straight in my own mind so that I can explain it to others when asked. Basically, what we're talking about rolling out is a new pay structure that is optional for existing employees, that is mandatory for new hires, that includes elements of what we would refer to as performance pay, but also includes other types of built-in incentives for other things that's unrelated, you know, to the evaluations. Okay.
That's correct. The only thing that I would, I would add to that, Mr. Pinkston, is that this is a work in progress. This is not a plan that we're proposing for you all to make a decision on anytime soon. And we fully expect, based on feedback that we're going to hear over the next couple of months by going to every single school in our district and talking to as many teachers as we possibly can, that this plan will have changes to it. And when we bring it back to you in two months, we can then have the conversation where we are, we are recommending an official plan.
And one quick follow-up. I was just catching up on reading today, and there's a new Mathematica study that on these, this concept of transferring, transfer bonuses to high need schools. And they paid out, you know, quite a bit of money, 20,000 over two years and five installments, and saw some significant gains in student achievement. They also saw some significant persistence among the teachers who then transferred after the program expired. And the line was showing great teachers how valuable they are by paying them more and asking them to take on the most challenging assignments can potentially improve results. So I don't know where our price point could be for these transfers, but the mathematics study, yeah, it struck me, looking at the synopsis of it.
Okay, and one more comment, and then we'll let you finish your presentation. Ms. Kim?
No, I'm done.
Okay. Ms. Kim?
Just a few thoughts. One, first of all, this is like, takes so much courage to move forward with this. And I know it's, can be scary just because not everyone's going to be happy, to your point. But just spiritually, I think this is absolutely the right move. Good teachers should be rewarded for great work. One thought is that, yes, it's sort of painful to see the research around advanced degrees because there is no correlation. And to build though, so what does matter? And is what's going through my mind, but then also to build on Mr. Pinkston's thought because that same study is in my head. I think that the notion of continuing, continual, what is it? Continuing education is awesome. Of course, we want to encourage that. And so the proxy for continuing education, because we have no other one, becomes an advanced degree. And so it's a perverse system where we're incentivizing people to get these degrees. A friend of mine, more than 10 years, in one of my comprehensive high schools, is so frustrated with the online program that she has to go through for many hours per week, and she finds it, quote, worthless. And so literally, it's just busy work. And every teacher, we all know teachers who talk about this, like, okay, like, we should just call this spade a spade. Our own teachers will say, I did, I mean, depending on the program, I did a lot of busy work. And so I don't know how to get out of that, but I, we want to award, yes, continuing education, assuming it's impactful. And so I don't know if there's different ways to, you know, pilot different things of like, what would teachers really say? Okay, yeah, I'm giving, I'm doing X number of hours per week on continuing education on something that's worthless versus, okay, actually, Ms. Smith, what would you choose to do? And, and you know what I'm saying? Like, that you think would actually advance you. So anyway, I hope we don't get caught in this either or, like, binary choice. Of course, we want continuing education. We want it to be good, though, that teachers are actually psyched about engaging. So that's one thought. The second one is, what were, what was the relative weights given to each criteria even in this first cut? So was the relative weight to like, an advanced degree versus the team rating?
So I don't think we thought about it like that. So let me answer what I think you're asking. Each step increase for your TEAM scores were given a 1% increase. So if you had a, for this, for this model, if you are a 1, you don't get any increase. If you're a 2, you get a 1% increase. If you're a 3, you get a 2% increase. 4, 3%, 5, 4%. We have, we have had many conversations, and I want, I want to suggest that the members of the board think about providing feedback to us around whether the 2, the level 2 should even, should be on the 1% increase or on a 0%. That was a big debate at the steering committee meeting. Right now, the model for this is a 10% increase between a bachelor's and a master's and a 10% increase between a master's and a PhD. However, that is also on the table. And do we want, are, do we, as a district, think that a PhD is 20% more significant than a bachelor's? I don't know the answer to that, but I think those are questions that we need to determine. And for the purposes of this modeling, that's how we used it. Did that answer, or do you?
Got it. Okay.
Does that make sense? I mean, I, yeah.
I want to dino my first comment, then again. Okay, I, yeah. I think then maybe I'll just move on to my, I think we need to think about that, maybe I can.
Keep in mind, this is a work in progress.
Totally.
This is not a recommendation, so let's just consider that.
Completely. So, yeah, I don't, yeah, I'll think about that and pass on some other.
Please, please get back to us with specifics because we would love to hear your thoughts on, we also have had this, you know, these conversations, and should that be the system? I don't know.
Got it. So, helpful. So then, and maybe this is what Mr. Pinkston also is getting at in referencing the Mathematica study. I mean, there's, that study, and there have been very successful implementations of this kind of program in different districts. DC being one of them. A friend of mine who is one of the people implementing it would absolutely say that this has been core in getting the results that they have. I mean, there are other, would be state, who also had tremendous name gains, just like the state of Tennessee. And it might, and so I was curious if you looked, you know, at specific compensation systems that we know, okay. That's fantastic.
Yeah. And we looked at all the ones that I'm sure you're, you're thinking of, as well as we did a cross-section of programs that are going on in the state of Tennessee, including the ASCs and, and other districts that are, have already implemented strategic help.
Okay. Because what struck me the most about this last column on this slide is just that, it's like, it overwhelms me since that there's just not much upside. You know, just like, just stepping up, like, away from looking, okay, this all is sort of sensible, like, when you're looking at it line by line. So I'm not saying it's not sensible. It's more just like, you have, let's say, another example, another friend of mine, in his second year at a different comprehensive high school in your district, managed to get 80% of his kids in Algebra I to proficient or advanced. He bounced, though, in a third year to a different school, still teaching algebra, but because he could get paid more, I mean, for a lot of different reasons, he bounced. And so the question is, like, that is extraordinary performance, you know, but, I mean, by any measure, that's extraordinary performance. And it makes me think, okay, in this model, when the differential is basically $25 per paycheck, effectively, if there's a 24 periods in a year, then that's just not going to actually influence him at all. You know, it just won't. And so it makes me think, okay, so the embedded philosophy here is not go big or go home. It's playing it very safe. And that's like legit, I just like, I think it'd be interesting to really think about, what does a go big or go home play look like on the scale of the Mathematica study? And what are we really trying to drive through? And will this, like, feel good to a lot, to certain segments, but then not really change anything in terms of, yeah, we want to change? So that's just one thought. And, you know, it's this $25 differential in this first example, it's a $41 per paycheck and 166 to the next one. So eventually, you know, if you have a PhD and you have 25 years, then you see a differential of 166. And that, to me, it's just like, really, is that really going to make a difference to that person? So that was my other thought, is just like, do we want to go big or home? Like, think about upside. Yeah.
We've got to move on. Please finish your presentation. We've got another presentation. You've got three minutes.
We just did some modeling out based on the assumptions I just relayed to Ms. Kim. And if 100% opt-in, we have a roughly $7 million on top of cost to implement the model, as well as another $3 million on top of that for those bonuses if we're, if we, based on several assumptions. I mean, this is very rough estimates, but we just wanted to give you a little bit of an idea of what we're looking at. In terms of next steps, and we did present the plan to the M&amp;EIA a couple of weeks ago. We'll continue our conversation with them. We have, we will be taking the show on the road, as we've been saying, and meeting with schools across the district. We'll have, we'll be at faculty meetings, et cetera, a couple of open sessions where webinars where teachers can ask questions. We want to get as much feedback as possible over the next two, two and a half months or so. Based on that feedback, the steering committee will come back and make an official set of recommendations to the board. We expect that to happen probably in a February meeting. At that point, if the board approves those recommendations, it'll go forward to the state for approval. And if the state board approves it, then we will begin rolling out communications about what the new plan means and a tool for suggesting where you might slot in if you do want to opt-in, et cetera, for full rollout in school year 14, 15. That is it.
Okay, perfect. Now, and if, board members, if you have any additional questions or comments, please give, send those to Ms. Hawkins so she can gather them all together and then send them on to the team. Dr. Register, any final words?
Yes, I want to commend this group and the entire study committee. They've put in many, many hours on a very regular basis to do this work, and it's very solid work. So thank you very much.
Very well done. Thank you very much.
I just want to add that I really appreciate the two teachers coming over here after a long day at school because their work was invaluable on the committee.
Absolutely.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate it.
So our next presentation is Alan Coverstone, who will review the RFP process for charters. Alan?
And no pressure at all, Dr. Coverstone, but we're going to be walking out of here at 7:30.
I'm sorry, how much time do you say?
We're walking out of here at 7:30.
So. Two seconds might be on the table. Okay, well, thank you. We need to hold this in to be heard here. Thank you for, for your time and for, is that coming through?
Your own.
Okay.
Can you hear?
Okay. And for taking a second just to walk through the details of what we, we hope to release formally. We'd like to do this as soon as we possibly can, but we want to make sure we get through this phase with you as well. You've given us incredible tools this year, from the academic performance framework to the diversity plan, to the actionable items in the resolution, to make it possible for this to be really our most sophisticated call for proposals to this point. And I think paves the groundwork for us to continue to be even more effective and efficient with that going forward. And so I just want to start there and then see if I can lay out some of the details for you. Just in, in getting this at a 30,000-foot view, I wanted to start by talking just about why we should articulate priorities in the first place. This is widely accepted as a, as a best practice and it's been endorsed in a number of different reports and documents around town, as it's been reported. But I think it's important to understand from my perspective, thinking about the work that we have to do and the work that then results two, three, four, 10 years down the road from the schools that we put in place, the ones that are likely to be successful, the ones that are likely to advance our goals, the ones that are not likely to close. I think these are some of the reasons why it's important to me that we, we do articulate our priorities. And I'll, I'll point out that we've been doing that in different ways to this point and this, this is a step forward in being able to do it better. So planning, predictability, I think managing disruption to families and communities, nobody, you know, there's been a lot of talk about what, closing schools, you know, and I don't envision it that way. I don't think that's the way that we need to envision it. Like, we have resources out there in terms of facilities, we have resources out there in terms of, you know, financial resources, and we have resources out there in terms of school suppliers. And we want to get those things together in a planning process that takes the long term into account and looks at, with a forward eye, where things are happening, where things are going, and tries to bring to bear our top priorities so that we can match those things up. On paper, it sounds great to say, well, if a school doesn't succeed, it just gets closed down. And in practice, of course, having that is important, but it is also a practical reality that changing courses and changing schools like that has practical implications for families that are involved. We've lived through that, we've seen that. And that's not at all the kind of approach that I think we're, we're looking at or that I consider when we talk about articulating priorities. Getting those priorities out on the table, having conversations about what they are, and thinking about where they'll be two, three, four years down the road, that's where I think we need to be in terms of making sure that our resources can be maximized from year to year and that these kind of real dislocations that stand in the way of education for real students on the ground are minimized as we go forward. We have the potential to do that and I think we're getting there with the tools that we have going forward. So that's really important to consider. Maximizing return on investments means that we don't want to invest twice in the same return. We want to invest our new investments in those areas where we can have the greatest gain and replace our lowest performing assets quickly. And so I think that's an important part of identifying what is performing well, what isn't, and the tools that I mentioned earlier are important in helping us with that. Engaging the community and ensuring transparency in how we make these decisions will improve confidence in our system overall and will also enable us to have greater input from a variety of different sources about what those interests really look like and are, which is our responsibility as the public school system. And then lastly, to compare potential investments from all sectors. It's not, of course, as everyone acknowledges, always the case, that a charter investment is the top investment, but likewise, it's not always the case that a school improvement strategy is the best investment. And only once we articulate our priorities and look holistically and start to put them side by side, which is what we can do, can we really make those decisions in productive ways that will maximize our returns. At least that's what I think and that's why we're headed in this direction. And I appreciate the support and the tools that you've given to make this possible because I think it's going to be positive. In terms of goals, our first goal is to increase student achievement, period. And I think Dr. Gentry's point at the last meeting was well-taken and absolutely accurate. This is not a cost containment strategy. This is not an attempt to, you know, prevent the closure of schools. I, I see this as an attempt to maximize our ability to draw in extra resources that otherwise might not be involved in helping us to educate students to a high level and being very clear about which of those resources that we currently invest need to be shifted in that direction. This involves how we use our facilities, it involves how we approach our charter applications, it involves everything that we do as a district, and all of these things can sort of come together out of this. But we have to bear in mind that the results for the students are the first and most and only important thing that we're really after. You know, we've, I've said it repeatedly, our, our vision statement by including and linking diversity explicitly with student academic achievement is really ahead of the curve and I think very, a very important linkage. And so we look at those things as one and the same. I think being able to manage growth is something that, from the capital perspective, you know, we spend a lot of money managing growth by building new buildings and moving our capital around. And I think that we have added flexibility that we can insert into the system when it comes to using our capital resources wisely if we try to manage growth the way that the priorities that we've articulated here this year help us to really prioritize seeking people who can help us in that regard. And so I think that makes good sense as well. And then ultimately, those come together to use our resources wisely. But, you know, the last thing we want to do is close down a bunch of schools and move students around for eight years, you know, in the, in the vague hope that somewhere, somewhere along the way, they'll get an education because we know they won't. We need a long-term, consistent, and effective strategy to invest our resources wisely if we're serious about student academic achievement. All right, how's priorities worked in the past? I'll race through this. You have these details. Priorities were set by the law to begin with. And so this is not the first time that there have been articulated priorities. Way back at the beginning of the charter school law, they said you had to serve students who were below proficient or whose schools were below proficient. And that was really the essence of the three schools that started before the charter school office came along. And those schools pretty much have targeted exactly that strategy for the entire time and, and for the most part, have delivered pretty good results on that. Obviously, we have the first school, the Smith and Craig Academy there on the list this year of a school that is in danger of being closed, but the other schools are doing quite well in terms of delivering on serving the student population that they identified and that they opened up to serve. So it can work that way. Remember in 2008, you don't necessarily, some of you do, some of you don't, we opened two schools and honestly, that was a year when we had no priorities. We, we didn't articulate priorities at all. If I had to reflect on that year, the priority that we articulated was, we better have some charter schools. And so we took all comers. And these were the comers and you know the results. Neither of those schools is still with us. When we started the charter school office, the first and only priority that we put in place because of that was quality first. That's when we joined NACSA, that's when we started to implement the process that we now have. We turned down five, I think it was five schools that year, and we got New Vision on the second run-through. But it began to set the stage for the kind of quality that we expected. And I would say that New Vision was a reward school last year. New Vision has been a school that has been set, steady and has served a population that needed them to be there, and they've been a good performing school ever since. And they set the bottom-line bar, really, for the kind of quality that we wanted to incentivize from that point going forward. So that was an important priority to set. Going forward from there, the bulk of our growth was essentially organized around analysis of the match between choices available to families, the performance of schools in the area, specifically if there were no choices or limited choices or inaccessible choices and low performing schools in the same area. We tried to target charter schools to go in those directions. We didn't have any formal RFP criteria for that and we didn't have your support in that one way or the other. But when we talked to suppliers, when we talked to people who were interested in starting charter schools, they responded very favorably to that. And really, honestly, the placement of the schools that we have so far is reflective of that basic priority, raising achievement, increasing choices for students who are most in need of those options in the shortest amount of time. We did, you know, kind of constantly update and look at what our maps told us about those intersections. And so, you know, we looked at maps like this one in 2011 that showed us what the intersection of high poverty and low achievement schools was. And, you know, we, we ran that a bunch and talked about it a lot, but it, you know, in this early phase of growth in charter schools, didn't, well, there we go, finally punched three times, it didn't, it didn't really, you know, it didn't have to be quite as fine-tuned as it now does as we move forward because we were able to hit with most of those on the list, and you can look at them in detail, exactly those priorities. You know, point being, we said what we wanted and we got what we wanted. In 2011, we decided to try to put these priorities in place, and you may recall these. These priorities, you know, really were just an attempt to signal that we needed some help in English language instruction and students with disabilities and innovative and efficient ways to distribute resources, et cetera. Those were things we were, they're kind of long shots, but we were hoping that we would be able to recruit behind those and that we would be able to get some extra capacity in here. And then elementary schools in North Nashville and commitment to diversity. And, you know, the results of, of that were actually pretty good when it comes to using priorities to get the results you want. We got a couple of North Nashville elementary schools and we got some innovative approaches to instruction, especially including financial literacy related to the middle school that went in in South Nashville. And then, you know, I guess arguably, the only one that wasn't directly reflected there was Kip College Prep, but that has to do with continuing to grow the feeder patterns of schools that are operators that are successful. We think that's good for families because it gives them predictability moving from one school to the other. And obviously, for us, we think it's a safe bet, a safer bet in terms of investment on our goal of advancing student academic achievement. However, those priorities didn't really hold up. And it's, you know, it's our fault. We just, we, we just put those priorities together based on the needs of the district and what we were analyzing, but we didn't get you all to buy into that and so, or even really know that that was happening, probably. And so after that became clear, and we did talk about that as a board, and we tried to identify what those were, you know, it was obvious, it was clear to me that if we're going to set priorities, those are priorities that y'all need to be behind because we can't go out and recruit for priorities if y'all don't understand them or aren't behind them or they aren't part of that. And so we think there's a really powerful and positive message to be sent when this board ratifies or supports or sends a message that these are the priorities that we're interested in. We think it helps us to recruit higher performing charter school operators. It gives them the, the knowledge that that commitment has been made upfront. We think it draws attention to the suppliers who can meet those specific needs and doesn't necessarily bring in suppliers who can't meet those specific needs. We think it just helps in the market for that to be articulated, and we think we're at a maturing stage in our development so that articulating those priorities will help us a lot in trying to achieve the goals that we have for growing charter schools. Last year, because we didn't have priorities, what we did receive, however, were five, are essentially replications. They're not all replications. Valor, of course, is new here, but it's a replication of sorts of the model that Todd Dixon had at Summit, Summit Prep. The others, you know, Rocketship is definitely a replication of a model that hadn't been here yet, but was a model that had been successful. And then the others are homegrown models that we're replicating. And, you know, replication of existing models that are successful is a good bet if you're trying to invest your money in strategies that will likely yield higher student achievement, which is the top priority that I have here and, and that we all have here. And in doing so, we analyze the ability of the organization to replicate and not overextend itself and wind up damaging the successes that it already has. But, but it, but once we've evaluated that, we think that that's a good use of our money. So that turned out pretty, that turned out to be a pretty good collection of applicants and, you know, resulted in a pretty decent year. But again, was less targeted and has created some of this discussion, and so we want to be a little bit more targeted. Lessons learned, suppliers are willing to help us meet our most pressing needs first. We just have to say what they are. I think the history of the last five years shows pretty clearly that they respond to those needs that are out there. We have the cooperation of the Tennessee Charter School Center in thinking about that and working toward that, as well as national organizations. And I made several calls today to talk with people that we've talked with in the past, as well as people like Rocketship and other organizations that we've begun to develop partnerships with and all, you know, to a person's, they're, they're willing to try to serve the needs that we think are the best, best needed, most needed needs first. Secondly, quality is the centerpiece. That's a lesson that we can't ever lose sight of. And then focusing on all great schools allows us to maximize our opportunities. So why did we identify these? I'll do this very briefly. We'll probably talk about this if you have questions. Obviously, conversion, we think takes the strategic plan seriously and serves the students most in need first. It is therefore our highest potential return on investment one-to-one. It offers facility solutions, which I think is often overlooked, for charter operators, which will enable us, if we're articulating this as a priority and out recruiting it, to recruit higher quality and higher effect organizations to come to Nashville because they will have that facilities piece taken care of in this response. They then just need to serve the students who are zoned to that school first. If they want to grow beyond that and they have the space, they're, you know, they can do that. But the, you know, the main priority are the students who are the furthest behind. It maintains a greater share of our available resources for instruction as a result because we're utilizing facilities we already have and have already paid for and allowing more instructional resources to flow to the students. And the academic performance framework offers us the transparency and predictability for schools to know where, where they stand and whether they're headed for being eligible for that kind of conversion or not. And it will eliminate the, it has the potential to reduce the kind of unhealthy fear that we've seen so much of that we might arbitrarily decide to close a school based on some other category. You know, here it is, your performance, your opportunity to move forward. And I think that's also why it's important for us to have laid out what these priorities are now so that schools have time before the end of this year to move forward on the academic performance framework. And, you know, wouldn't it be great to have the problem that they all came off, you know, all came off the list because they made such dramatic improvements this year? That's obviously, again, goal number one. Everything else is secondary to that. In terms of growth, we think that that gives us a more flexible response to rapidly growing populations, allows us to leverage our capital so it'll go further. And I think there are a lot of creative opportunities for leveraging our capital to, to make it go further in, in investments of this, of this type, especially as population increases move from one place to another in the county and we retain the flexibility to invest in different areas. It expands the effective reach of our efforts in terms of number of students being well-served. If you've got overcrowded facilities and you can, for a one-to-one student cost, you can move them into an overflow building, which essentially is what we're talking about doing, then you're going to get better classroom environments and better schools and more success for more students. And you do that based on choice. You don't do that based on rezoning, which generates all the inherent conflicts that always come along with that. It gives us all kinds of flexibility that we don't have otherwise. I think it could be positive. And it allows for better long-term planning so our capital investments can be made to work more effectively for the benefit of students. And then current operators are included in the, in the resolution that you adopted. Those, particularly those with middle schools who took us at our word and applied for middle schools first and put together successful track records in the middle schools and then came back to apply for high schools that they wanted to, they wanted to operate, we think that was a good faith effort on their part. And for the most part, these people are tremendous collaborators with our district. And so this allows for them to continue the pathway again so that their parent, their parents and families and students can know where they might go following the completion of a school that they've been successful at. That's a challenge that we faced in some of our magnet schools from time to time and it's an important one that definitely affects families. And so I think it's, it takes a lot of foresight to have included that as well. You know, again, ultimately, this is not a cost containment measure. It is a utilization of our resources measure. This is the schools that, you know, have been talked about as under-enrolled schools. And I just want to make the point that viewing that issue as a, an issue solely of under-enrollment, solely of charter schools, or solely of one initiative, you know, allows us to become myopic and miss the opportunities for collaboration and use of our resources that exist. And I think in a positive way, to talk about protecting our assets that are strong and utilizing our resources differently in order to add, add resources to the value. So what this bar chart shows is each of those lines represents 100% of the students who are zoned, who live in the zone for the school at the bottom of the page, and who are enrolled somewhere in Davidson County public schools. And so that doesn't take into account people who attend private schools or other, other places. These people are all enrolled in Metro Nashville public schools. And you can see from that that it's only, only in a couple of cases where the enrollment in charter schools, that middle light blue bar, is greater than the enrollment in other choice schools in the district. And that is a good thing. It is a thing that we have tried to invest in as a district. It's something that we believe is important for families. And what it enables us to do is to say, okay, if the building's under-enrolled, the question is not that, the question is, how are they performing? And if that school is performing well, then let's say, okay, maybe that's the right size for that school and let's figure out how to use the facility space more creatively to leverage that space for greater return, in the same way that we, we might have opportunities to leverage space, leverage resources in the capital budget for greater return. I just think this is an opportunity to really extend the number and type of highly successful opportunities that we have without pitting ourselves against one another. And I wanted to make sure that I said that tonight because the RFP is a centerpiece to that, in being able to identify how we are using our resources more holistically and not think about it as just a magnet problem, or a choice problem, or a charter problem, or a zone school problem. It is a resource use, use challenge and opportunity for us, and I think we're really right there. And the more we get into this, the more I can see that. What will the process look like? We will articulate absolute priorities that all charter applicants must meet. These have to do, of course, with their capacity to deliver, and a lot of that will look like the application we've had previously. It will measure their capacity, their education plan, their resources, their boards, et cetera. But they will be, you know, they will have to pass muster on those two criteria. Do they advance the academic performance of the district? And do they, are they consistent with the diversity management plan, which spells out very specifically the kinds of plans that they have to have and the impact that they would have on other schools in the district, based on their recruitment patterns, transportation patterns, location, and the like. Following that, and only schools that succeed in those areas, we will then be able to review the schools based on the competitive priorities that they, that they purport to advance. And those are the ones that are inherent, that are in the RFP and that are in the resolution that you adopted. So, those would be growth demand, management conversion, and existing operators extending to high schools. Again, I have details in the packet that you have that are essentially bullet points that detail the criteria that we would put into the RFP or that we have put into the RFP. We're, you know, still in a position, because we haven't released that, to allow some edits to that, and we certainly want your input and your reflection on any of those kinds of things. But we're trying to spell out those criteria. We'll then translate those criteria to rubrics and use those for evaluation in the process. So, all three of those you have, I won't detail those. This is a picture of, I'm going to do this two ways, and I'm going to shut up. This is a picture of the process. For some people, the picture works better. For some people, my pictures don't work well at all, no matter what. But I'll give it my best shot. A charter applicant comes in at the top there where it says capacity review. That's kind of the traditional state application. That, if they pass the, obviously, if they don't have the capacity to operate, then we'll recommend denial, period, end of story, same as we always have. If they do have the capacity to operate and deliver, at least at that initial review, then it will go to the best interests review. That begins with the absolute priorities, academic performance and diversity management. If they don't, if they don't meet those, boom, recommended for denial. If they do meet those, then they'll move forward to competitive priorities, and that relates to those that we have articulated already and provided. And again, if they don't meet one of those, recommend for denial. If, boom, thank you. If they, if they do, then we'll rank them and, and do the matching that's required in terms of the turnaround because of the timeline. And that, that is how our annual recommendations would be advanced. If you like it, in a linear way, phase one, capacity evaluation, phase two, absolute priorities, et cetera. Phase three, competitive priorities and the annual investment plan decisions that we'll make. I'll just say one more thing. Articulating our priorities is a good idea for the reasons that I've articulated. I hope you think so. I appreciated your doing that. I think that helps us with charter operators, and it will help us going forward. I think it is also required by law because we are required by law to approve charter schools that advance the best interests of the district, the community, and the students. And that is always the standard that we have used. But it is right and fair for us to say in advance, these are what we consider to be those priorities. Now, it's right and fair for people who disagree to argue with us and to talk to us about those priorities. And it's right and fair for us to have an ongoing dialogue and process over time where those priorities get discussed and where every year as a community, you know, you representing the community helped to come to a consensus on what those priorities are for that year. But it is, it is, it is, you know, the alternative is to suggest that if we need English textbooks next year, and we say, we need English textbooks because we don't have an English textbook, and somebody says, but I really like to deliver math textbooks, that we should then invest in those math textbooks. We are responsible for being efficient with the uses of our dollars and for matching them to the outcomes of students. And I think that's what we're trying to do here. I know that isn't exactly the way that it's come across, and so I want to try tonight to at least spend a little bit of time wrestling with those questions and how it all, how it all comes out, and make sure that we get it right that way, because that's the way that we want to do it. Thank you.
Well, Dr. Gentry is about to jump out of that chair over there, so go right ahead, ma'am.
So, I heard it just then, but I still don't see it. And so, I guess I'm, I'm trying to align, you know, where I've been stuck for what feels like five years in this whole process. And so, I didn't do that.
That wasn't you. It's okay.
What I'm trying to understand is, before we even get to that box that says capacity review, where has the conversation occurred that says, we need English books? Because I don't, I don't, I guess I, I know you were trying to...
Oh, gotcha.
...think about all the time. So, that's one part I want to understand is where and who's involved, and what are the inputs to saying, we need someone who can come into the district and move the performance of our EL students? That's the first piece. So, if we, how do we determine that need? And then where does the other piece, I think, always comes kind of in the middle, when Will starts to raise his hand and says, but we can't, can we afford it? So, we have X number of students that are performing at this level, and we want to move them here. And so, I need this many seats that are really good at moving EL students forward. And Will will say, if he's still doing the budget thing, where does the assessment of, we have space here, we could put a school, we can afford this many students, we can afford for them to start in this year, and this is where the resources are going to come. So, I think all of that conversation that I'm looking to happen long before I put up on the website, I need someone who can move EL students forward, because I have to know, part of that filtering of those applications is, can you cover the number of students? Before I can even open the door for the applications, can I support it? Do I have the infrastructure to support it? And then open it up to say, I'm looking for someone or someones, it could be multiple operators, to provide me 250 seats that's, that have the, all that other stuff, proof that they can move EL students forward. I guess that's the part that I'm still missing, because to me, that's a true RFP process, and at least the needs assessment and articulation piece is the part that keeps, it leads me.
Okay, that's a long question.
I know.
Let me do the rest of my presentation then, and let's, let's put it in context, and then I'll work back to the specific, what I think was the specific start. So, this was in an earlier presentation that I delivered to this board, comprehensive needs assessment. It should keep getting better and better and better. What you described is where I hope we're headed, and I believe we're headed. The Academic Performance Framework was, just got three years of data about two months ago, you know? So, I mean, I think partly what you're looking at here is an evolution toward, you know, that's the Moneyball version, and that's where I really want to be. But, but, you know, practically speaking, we've got some timelines, and I've had my whole team on it for quite some time, but...
Oh, let's keep the city high.
Yeah. You know, it's, it's a challenge, and I don't mean to be glib about that, because we want to get it, we want to get it right each time. And so, yes, our information will get better, our targets will get better, our ability to address more and different needs will get better, as it has. But we have to evolve and get there, and I want to make sure that in the short run, we invest our money as wisely as we can, given what we know, and then keep pressing for those answers. Now, that's one part of the big answer. Something like this starts to, starts to be possible. I don't want you to even look at it, really, because it'll make you dizzy. But, you know, that's the Academic Performance Framework, the diversity measures. It's got measures about growth in the school population, declines in the school population. We can do wait lists, we can do applications, okay? I mean, I think that vision of getting down to where, how many EL seats, how many, you know, where do we have needs that we could invest in in terms of exceptional education, et cetera, all that eventually can fit in there. I would say this, however, just because we have need for, you know, 400 highly effective EL seats, doesn't mean we have to get them all from charters.
Understood.
Right? And so, it's not a true RFP, it'll never be a true RFP process in the sense of, you know, we're buying 40 textbooks. But I hope that by getting really good on this needs assessment, we have a better chance of bringing disparate community resources to bear, other departments' resources to bear, school turnaround efforts to bear. And ultimately, you know, the idea would be to identify the schools where we have highly successful EL populations, and then to match those with the schools where we have less successful EL populations. And we just are in the process of trying to build those capacities.
So, I guess in the interest of doing what we all want to do, is to make this a conversation about leveraging all of our resources to close the gaps that we see in a display like this. Is it going to be your office's delivery then, deliverable to say, okay, after looking at all of these data inputs, and this is where our needs are, are you owning, looking at all those resources and how we bring them to bear? Or how is that conversation working? Who are you, else are you working with to say, okay, well, maybe what the real answer is, is hiring more, if we stick to the EL example, hiring a few more, you know, specialists in these particular, in this language, or more just EL instructors in these district schools versus trying to find an outside provider to, to deliver that service? So, I don't know, who becomes a part of really putting together what our ask for academic support is for the coming year?
Yeah, so the, the short answer to that is, no one department can own it. The medium answer is, we have kind of owned it because I didn't know how to make decisions without some set of priorities. But I didn't own it myself. I worked with Chris Weber and understood projections in terms of growth. I looked at maps that he could generate like that about, you know, so we were trying to do it. The ultimate answer is, it's a district, you know, it's a district-driven thing. And Dr. Register, you know, through his departments collaborating together, needs to produce that and will produce it. But I think it even goes beyond that. I mean, I think it involves community input as well. And so, the question is how that gets structured going forward. And this is one important evolution, in part because it raises that question. And I will tell you, in terms of putting this draft together, that there were, you know, that Henson was around the table, and Mr. Weber, that, you know, there was a nice collection of people having this, Dr. Chang is having a, having this conversation, and I thought it was really rich and fruitful, and I'll let Dr. Register characterize it however he wants.
Yeah, we're, just one specific example. We had a meeting about facilities today, and one of the, and getting ready to bring in the next, in the next week's facilities planning, and this is a factor. This is, this is something to consider as we look at that. And so, Alan's a part of the Leadership and Learning Division, and Dottie Critchlow and Brenda Steele are working on EL programs now. And so, all of that has to come into play. It's a collaboration. And Alan takes the point on, on putting the RFP out and communicating with those people, but everybody in the district's involved in that process to one extent or another. The diversity plan, you know, that we, we have Lynn Stevens working with us now, Dr. Stevens working with us on implementation of that. And as we cite buildings, and as we look at growth, and as we consider recruiting charters to, to relieve overcrowding, the diversity plan's a key factor there that we look at across the district. So, there, there has to be a collaboration beyond, beyond just Alan's department.
And I, and I think that's evolving, and ultimately, that's, that's the big picture. Let me just drill down to the EL issue in particular. I mean, we had discussion about whether, you know, EL should be one of the priorities. And, you know, I'm not opposed to that as a priority. And, you know, what you're kind of reflecting is, anytime we articulate the priorities, somebody says, well, what about this one? And that's, and that's what we want. If we don't articulate them, then we don't get that discussion, and we don't say, okay, well, then let's start really investigating. And I have really started to hunker down and figure out, you know, are there, is, are there charter schools that can add value in these assets? There've been several national studies that have seen little or no difference in charter schools that have shown pretty dramatic gains for students with non-English backgrounds. And so, you know, going after those charters, working with the organizations that are promoting that, you know, it's an area where we can do more recruiting as a result of having had that conversation, and I'd see us getting to that point.
And we'll go around the table and ask for questions. Dr. Coverstone, are you, is your presentation completed?
I'm all finished.
All right. Ms. Baring, do you have any questions?
Let me pass right now.
Okay, Ms. Kim? Ms. Shepard?
Okay.
Mr. Pinkston?
Thank you. Couple of, just kind of questions, or maybe start with a couple of clarifications. One of the things that we didn't get to talk about, or that we didn't reference specifically a couple of weeks ago when we passed the new resolution is, you know, even if we added no new charter schools, period, under, the existing charters under existing agreements, we're going to add 6,000 seats over the next five years. That's, you know, $55 million worth of seats spread out over the next five years. So, we're going to be growing, the charter sector here is going to be growing significantly, even if we did nothing. So, I think that's an important thing to acknowledge. On the issue of conversions, I really do think that's our highest leverage opportunity to drive more improvement faster to the most students. The existing, you know, way the charter market has been developing, it's basically, you know, trying to reform the system 100 kids at a time. What we're talking about doing is much more ambitious than that, and I want to come back to kind of who it is, who in the market nationally, you know, can really pull that off in a way that's meaningful, and what is our plan for, for reaching out to them as, as part of the RFP in the, in the, in the application process. On the issue of growth management, Dr. Gentry, to your point on English language learners, I think what makes the growth management component at, at this moment really powerful is, is the schools and the cluster tiers that are on track to be the exceedingly overcrowded tiers within the next four years also happen to be really high percentage of English language learners. I spent part of the weekend driving parts of my district and parts of Dr. Brandon's district where these, these tiers are located. And Glenview Elementary in, in my district is 66% EL population already. We just expanded it recently, and it's already overcrowded again, and it's going to be on track for severe overcrowding within a couple of more years. Paragon Mills, 54% English language learner population. They've got in their backyard right now probably 10 or 12 portables that I could count from, from the streets. So, I think, you know, it's, you know, a profound opportunity, I think, to manage growth in those areas and provide, you know, options to a part of, of the student population that really could benefit from some innovative approaches to achievement gap closure. The other thing I started thinking about, just kind of driving the area, which is also the area where I grew up, so I know it well, is there's a ton of vacant commercial real estate along Nolanville Roads, in particular, and Murphysboro Road. If we wanted to go into those areas and build a new school, that's $10 million, you know, $15 million, maybe more for a new elementary school. Meanwhile, there's this glut of commercial real estate that a charter operator could move into faster, you know, much faster than we could ever build a school and at a much more affordable rate. So, I, I guess one of the things that I would like us to think about is, is a proposal or a challenge. Instead of us spending, you know, all that money in those areas, adding our own physical capacity, I'm proposing, I mean, there's no formal vote or anything, obviously, tonight, but I'd like to propose that we do something we've never done before, which is, let's carve out some jumpstart capital funding that could be used, one-time dollars that could be used to help charter operators get a, get a toehold on facilities in that area. It has the potential to cost us a lot less, you know, if we provide a million or so in jump, jumpstart funding to bring a school in, in the South Nashville, in the commercial area. Excuse me, I need some water. It costs us less, and it adds capacity faster, and it's an adaptive reuse of commercial real estate, and it's a community redevelopment play. So, you know, we don't have to talk about all that tonight and work out the details, but I do think that that's something worth considering. And I think the growth management, the conversion, plus the growth management opportunities here are, I think, profound. But, I mean, Mr. Coverstone, tell me if you agree, agree or disagree. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I agree. And let me just work backwards. I, I think it would be premature to work out the details because there's a lot of options in the capital front that could be incredibly creative, and some of them might not only not, not cost us a lot, they might actually make us some money. Because the real heavy lift for charter operators who can otherwise get on the bond market is 18 to 36 months. They need something to enhance their credit so that they don't have to borrow at an exorbitant fee before they get established and they get their income and they grow. And for a very simple amount, if we were able to, I mean, National Alliance for Public Education, you know, set up a fund and put in a little bit of capital money, if we could get approval for that, I think we could create a revolving debt fund that would pretty much incentivize charter schools not only to locate here, because nobody else is doing that, but would also, you know, enable us to charge some interest and keep the revolving loan going. So, I mean, I think there's a lot of creative ways that even go beyond just the straight incentives, which I think are also useful in terms of waiving people in, and I agree with you wholeheartedly.
I just feel like if, you know, if we can add capacity at a fraction of the cost that it would ordinarily take for us in an area where we're going to have to add capacity anyway, that then frees up capital dollars that we can then spread elsewhere in the system for all this deferred maintenance and all of these other remodelings and expansions that we need elsewhere in existing schools. So, it has a sort of treble effect, kind of like, you know, throwing a pebble in the water and watching the ripples go out across the system. You know, it's not something that I had sort of fully internalized when we were first having the conversation, but, you know, just driving and thinking, you know, it's something that has seemed to me to be yet another layer of, of something that could be very interesting if we really want to continue down this path.
And I think you had other questions about, ask a question about EL. I don't remember the framing of the question, and about conversions. I'll just, you know, talk about conversions.
Yeah, I mean, where do we find operators? I mean, I know, I guess the question that I forgot to ask is, we're not just going to throw an RFP out on the street and hope for the best. I mean, how do we communicate it across?
Yeah, no, and I mean, you know, and for, for what it's worth, the Achievement School District's been trying to recruit people to do exactly that now for two years. And so, the connections, the contacts, the people who are out there who are available, you know, they've been to Tennessee a bunch, they just don't come to Nashville because the work's in Memphis. And so, I think we have... And so I think we have a fruitful line of connection there and can work through that and have already started to try to do that. We also, there are also some high-profile operators who have, are having great success nationally in converting schools or restarting in the same building with the same students, different adults, the schools, both in district schools as well as some failing charter schools, which is another way to sort of blunt the impact of the dislocations that occur, but not compromise on the, on the overall accountability method. So Public Impact just issued a report I referenced last time. I made sure I had it with me this time of, that analyzes, that analyzed these successes in five specific conversion efforts, just one or two years into it, and there's substantial increases. And these are organizations like Mastery Charter School. We, I talked to them extensively when we were doing the Cameron work, just because they were the ones who were doing that kind of work at that time and their results have continued to be strong. It would be, you know, I mean, I think what we have the opportunity to do by talking about the things we're talking about and setting this as a priority is to get into a different level of conversation from where we've been and find that it is a narrow set of people that have very specialized experience, but I think if we get into that, then there's absolutely no reason they shouldn't come to Nashville. This is the best place to live. EL, and, you know, the Council of La Raza is working with a series of charter school CMOs that are having great success with EL students, not the least of which is Yes Prep, that has been being recruited here to Nashville extensively by someone who used to work at Yes Prep, who is in the state. And, you know, I'd love to be able to jump into that as well and see if we couldn't interest them and, you know, maybe have two solutions at the same time, tackle some of our challenges and give us something to learn in terms of EL, but also meet some of the priorities that are on the list.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pinkston. Mr. Hayes, any questions?
Maybe a comment. I hope that, Mr. Coverstone, that you and perhaps fellow board members and future board members, future superintendents will continue to watch our academic framework. I've stated this, I think softly before, that I have concern around our ability to manipulate it and if it's a, if it's a target that is, one that's outlined for conversion, right, that we have an asterisk at the bottom of that thing that says that we can, as a district, change those assumptions on an annual basis based on state targets. So I hope that, that we as a board will watch that, that we will try to keep our standards high. And I think back to Dr. Garcia and he closed schools, he did all sorts of things to manipulate the data, would renovate schools and do things that changed how we looked at it. So to the extent that charter schools may in the future be eligible to apply for a conversion, that we execute and hold our standards high and I hope that your office will continue to advocate for that. I'm sure you will, but I'm thinking over the next decade, so that's why I said, your office, future superintendents, future school board members will continue to advocate for high standards and for not watering them down.
You're here, I think it's pretty transparent now too, though. For all the numbers and pieces, you'd have to dig in, but I think it's all there and it hasn't been. And it's all weighted according to, you know, measures that we can hold each other accountable to and it hasn't been. And so I think we've taken a step forward in that. You always have to be vigilant about that. If, you know, if you're serious about quality, it's a, it's a day-by-day challenge. Just ask any teacher who tries to struggle for it in a classroom.
Ms. Froeg, any questions?
I just have a, I have a think outside the box kind of comment. I am, you know, I've been sort of fixated on this whole child education and been bringing that up and to ask you guys some questions. And there's a wide range of, charter schools offer a wide range of, you know, what we, what some would consider the extra offerings, you know, the art and music and foreign language. And I, and I think we're really defining quality too narrowly if we are just looking at math and English scores, you know. And I, and maybe I'm a little late to the dance, I maybe should have brought this up as we're, I've just been sort of toying with this in my mind and how this could apply to charter schools as well. Maybe I should have made this one of our priorities or maybe this is a discussion we have when the applications come before us in the spring. But I'm, I'm really interested in making sure that we get schools that are not putting all their emphasis on the tested subjects and offering, you know, a variety of extras for the children. And I'm interested in that, not only in charter schools, but in the traditional schools as well. So I think that's something I would love to see, you know, as track and ask for, because if you'll, if you talk to some, some good honest charter leaders, they'll tell you, you know, "Look, here's the deal. I've got, if I put an extra 20,000 minutes on math, we can boost that score." Or, you know, "I can put that on art, but I really got to make the math score to stay afloat." You know, so, and so they end up saying, "Well, I can't really do the art if I..." So those are the, I just think we've got to get a balance in there. We have to, all the schools, you know, I think like, I would like to see foreign languages and the traditional schools that we have, so that's just--
Well, I don't disagree with you at all and, and just to be clear, this includes science as well. I know that's not what you're talking about, but that is a more well-rounded measure than what we, you know, kind of traditionally see. And we do look at that when the applications come due and, you know, frankly, a lot of charter schools nationally haven't been all that innovative, but, you know, we have a financial literacy, you know, we have the computer science, we have charter schools that I think are much more interested in that sort of well-rounded deal. And I'll, I'll tell you this, I think the research is clear that if, if all you do is aim to drill and kill in math and reading, that you don't get those scores either. And I think that if you don't have a social and emotional life for the students at the school and families that are connected, you won't get those kind of results. And so, you know, I will, I will, I will say that the charter schools that we have operating are delivering that for, you know, a substantial number of their families. Does it necessarily look like an art class or is it a, you know, a community activity or something that happens in the home? I think there are alternate ways to accomplish that, but in terms of the social and emotional life, I don't think you get the, I don't, you know, I, you would be hard pressed to show me a school where the drill and kill gets it done and the students aren't enjoying being in school. I don't think that happens very often, if ever.
Yeah, and I think it absolutely boosts test scores if you do it right, the, so, yeah.
Any other comments from board members? Dr. Register, would you like to make some comments?
One comment about the academic performance framework in response to Mr. Hayes' comment. Let me, let me just give you a little bit of background on the academic performance framework. We created that when the state went to waivers and the emphasis on state accountability moved from individual school accountability to district-wide accountability. We created that academic performance framework so that we could hold individual schools accountable. And when you understand and study the criteria that are established in that academic performance framework, it is significantly higher than state standards. And so let's recognize that. This is not a watered-down or lower standard. It is a much higher and more comprehensive standard than the state, than the state accountability framework now. So I want to make that point.
I agree with you wholeheartedly and hope that we, hope that we maintain a trajectory that's ahead of what the state expects for us. But you're absolutely right.
Any other comments? I will say, the one comment that, or looking at one of the slides, one of the things that we have said and one of the things that I think started us moving on this path is recognizing what our needs are. It is very, very difficult for us, regardless of the type of educational opportunities we provide to our students, it's difficult for us to invite anyone in if we don't know what we need. So I think this, this process sends us on that path to looking at ourselves a little closer to determine what it is we need. Otherwise, we can't do anything with it. You know, when, at the beginning of this presentation, you talked about how in 2008, we didn't have any priorities. We're just, you know, "Come on, charters, come on in, let's see what happens." And as that occurred, we started to realize we have to have some sort of priorities. We have to understand what the needs of our children are before we get to the point where we have a lot of these providers here and every one of them is doing something different. And is it really going to be beneficial to our children? Is it going to be beneficial to their educational opportunities and advancement? So this is a great opportunity for us to get it right while we are still early in the game. We are relatively new in the charter game and so I thank you for the work that you've done here. It, it says a lot about the lessons that we've learned and where we have come from and where we're going over the next few years. So thank you for recognizing that need and putting it in paper for us today. I really appreciate it.
I appreciate you saying that. I, I'm, my wife will not maybe agree with this, I shouldn't get paid to come to work. I mean, I do, doing this--
Okay. We've got some budgetary issues.
He missed the part of the strategic compensation.
This is not a cost, cost control measure, I'm suggesting. No, I say that, I love doing this and, and because I think it has tremendous potential and I think we can see where, where things are going. And I appreciate the time that this board takes to listen and learn and try to, try to get the message out. And I would appeal to, not just this board, but everybody in this community when I say, if we're really going to recruit the highest-yield operators that are out there in the country, we got to stop sending mixed messages about our divisions here in this city. The city's at the forefront of collaboration when it comes to charters and district schools. It is, it is a, not only a rare district that articulates its needs, but then asks people to come help with those needs. I mean, Dr. Register deserves tremendous credit for just the self-confidence to run a school to system that says, "It really doesn't matter about my ego, it matters about, well, how the students are being served and we're going to maximize that," you know, and taking all comers. And that is a message that doesn't get out from Nashville and that's frustrating and it's disappointing. And it's not really something that, you know, we can point fingers at people outside of Nashville for. We have the opportunity to start to recognize that ourselves and talk about it more ourselves. And so I realize I'm a little on my soapbox here, but I think the evidence is clear that those things are happening and that we ought to start to all recognize and take pride in that happening and not point fingers at one another.
Absolutely, absolutely. I think we have some of the best and brightest enrolled in our schools and there are lots of people who are kind of jealous of what we do here and I, I like that a lot. So if there are no other questions, I have one final announcement. To each and every one of you, have a happy and safe Thanksgiving and eat lots and gain lots of weight so I don't have to. And with that, Ms. Froeg.
There may be no further business. This meeting is adjourned.